Nora, do you have the...
You're on record.
I'm on record. The meeting of the Township of Presippany Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, February 26, 2024, at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at Sec. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Councilman McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stansiel.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Mr. Lagana.
Very good. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has something they wish to bring to the attention of the board that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we move on. First item of business is a resolution for Application 23:518, Petox Lake Iowaata Realty LLC. Is there somebody willing to move the resolution?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Didich.
With the motion to approve Application 23:518, Petox Lake Iowaata Realty LLC, 102 North River Vic Road, Block 519, Lot 24, minor site plan with variance to construct a deck and facade improvements.
Do I have a second?
Second, Math.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right. The next item on our agenda is Application Number 23527, Alpha Investments LLC, 52 Navajo Avenue, Block 525, Lot 21, minor subdivision with C variance for a two-lot subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Larry Kelly on behalf of the applicant, Alpha Investments LLC. Thanks for having us here this evening. Mr. Chairman, members, I think we intend to be relatively brief on this application. There's some relief. We'll offer the testimony that proves to it, and we'll answer all the board questions, of course, but just to frame what we hope to do here tonight on this matter. It's a minor subdivision on behalf of Alpha Investments LLC. This board and the Board of Adjustment has seen Alpha here on a number of projects. The principal of Alpha is a longtime resident, property owner of Presippany Troy Hills, and rehabilitates a lot of properties within the township proudly, and this is such a site on 52 Navajo. It's an oversized property. It's almost twice the size lot area as the zone calls for. It's a remarkably large property with a structure that's there now in pretty...to call it disrepair would be polite, right smack in the middle of the property. So the applicant's proposal is to subdivide this property, which is nearly twice the size as what's required in the zone, develop two new structures, one on each lot, single-family dwelling on one lot, single-family on the other, raise the existing structure, of course, and put two homes on this 10,000 square feet of property where, right now, you've got one house that is hurting very badly, right smack in the middle of this double-sized property. There's some bulk relief in compor with this. There's a lot frontage deficiency, 60 feet's required, 50's proposed, so along with that comes a lot area deficiency for both lots. The structures are right-sized, they're in keeping with the neighborhood. You'll hear planning testimony shortly that the neighborhood composition is such that we're in compor with the lot area that you would see, the lot frontage that you would see on other properties, and the structures themselves meet all the setback requirements or the coverage requirements and the like. The applicant's not trying to fit something here that doesn't work. It just becomes a slight lot frontage deficiency of 10 feet on each lot. With that, Mr. Chairman, members, we're going to have three witnesses this evening. Our project surveyor, Steve Smith, he's up here with me now. Our project architect, Keith Chambers, will testify second, and then John McDonough, our project planner, will wrap it up with the planning testimony and the proofs. We hope to do that, Mr. Chairman, within the next hour.
We have a couple of waivers.
Just two today. Requesting waivers for the traffic study and environmental assessment. The environmental assessment's not technically required for a minor subdivision, and we don't have to take issue with the traffic study either.
All right. Do we need to vote on them?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the waivers discussed in the A R H memo of, what is it?
1215.
Need for discussion, or am I going to motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve the waivers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So our first of three witnesses, they're going to swear you in. Our project surveyor, Mr. Steve Smith, he's also a licensed professional planner. He will only be testifying tonight in his capacity as a licensed surveyor.
Turn to your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address for the record. Please spell your last.
Stephen Irismith, S M I T A, distance at 320, Route 10 West, Randolph, New Jersey. I'm a principal of Jalen and Jono in South City, so I've been associated with the firm for over 45 years. A licensed professional, lands of air licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1984. Fourth, a licensed professional planner licensed in the state since 85. My license is block 10. You can read the typical next question. I've testified before planning boards and zoning boards of adjustment through Admar, Suburban Middle, Central, Southern, West, 110, and Free District here before this board.
All right. Any questions on his expertise? Hearing and seeing none. Sir, you're witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think that you did all the testimony.
I tried to help. I tried to help you, Steve. I did the best I could. But if you wouldn't mind, Steve, briefly, you know, walk the board through the lot we have today, what's there today, and how you propose to divide the property up if this were approved.
All of the maps I have mapped on the board this evening are the plans that the board has before them, there are no modifications on them. As Mr. Kelly indicated, we have an existing lot that's 10,000 square feet. What I'm going to do is turn to Sheet 2, which is the existing condition plan. We have a paved driveway that comes off of Navajo on the southerly end of the property. Again, a one-story framed dwelling that, to say, is in disrepair is kind of being kind describing what it's like. There are also additional sidewalks and patios and stone fireplaces on the property. The proposal is to remove all of that. There is also a railroad retaining wall that's along the front of the property, actually in the Navajo Avenue, right of right. As part of the proposal, that wall is coming out. We're planning to regrade that area, which I will explain to you when we go to Sheet Now, Sheet 2 is the grading and subdivision geometry plan. We're proposing to subdivide this property into two lots, each containing 5,000 square feet. It's in the R4 zone, which, as Mr. Kelly mentioned, requires 6,000 square foot of lot area and 60 foot of lot width. We're proposing 5,000 square feet of area and 50 foot of lot width. But in going through the other bulk requirements, we do comply with all of those. We will comply with all of the setbacks, front, rear, and side. We comply with building height, building coverage, and lot coverage. That what we are proposing are two single-family dwellings. They will each have a driveway entering off of Navajo Ave. And what we are proposing is driveway that will come straight into the garage for the proposed dwelling, plus a driveway that comes along the side of the house. What that will allow us to do is have three off-street parking places. One in the garage, one along the side of the house, and one in the driveway in front of the garage. In doing this, what it does is it creates an additional variance that we're seeking. The ordinance requires that driveways be five foot from a property line. We have this set up with the proposed driveways will be one foot off of the property line. But what's happening is the grading between the two homes is going to be level between the two homes so that there isn't an issue grading between the two driveways. There's an additional variance that we're requesting, which is for the height of the retaining wall in the front yard. On proposed Lot 21.02, we are proposing a retaining wall along the...as an extension of the northerly side of the proposed dwelling. Back where that retaining wall meets the proposed structure, the retaining wall will have a height of six feet. Now, why are we looking to do that? The reason that we're looking to do that is that presently, the entire site slopes from Navajo in an easterly direction, so all the runoff from the property is going on to the neighbors to the east of us. What we are proposing with our application is that from the front of the homes to Navajo, we will be pitching the grade towards the street so there will be less runoff to the homes that are behind it. In order to accomplish that, we need to have a retaining wall of six-footed height at the building. Now, we could reduce that to four foot, but if we do that, then the drainage is going to flow in an easterly direction to the homes behind us. We felt it was more prudent to have it sloping out towards Navajo. As part of the proposal, we are also showing the installation of dry wells for each of the proposed dwellings. We turn to Sheet 4 of the application. It is a soil erosion and sediment control plan that if the board should decide to act favorably on the application, we understand that it will require Mars County Soil Conservation approval as well. When we go to the following sheets, those are our detailed sheets for the application. Now, the property is presently serviced by public water and sewer. We are proposing that the new dwellings will be serviced by public water and sewer as well. I have a report from the board engineer dated January 9, 2024. In going through the six items and his report for recommendations, the short answers, number one, okay. Number two, we should consider connecting the dry well from proposed 21...proposed 21.02 out to the existing inlet in front of the property. That it's something that we will look into if the invert of that inlet is sufficiently deep, we have no issue tying the overflow into that. Item three, confirming the lot numbers with the tax assessor, we have no issue. The plan should be amended to indicate the location of water sewer main in the street. We have no issue. And number five, the plan is to file this minor subdivision if approved by deed, and we agree again with the sixth comment that the dwelling should be removed prior to perfecting the subdivision deeds.
Chairman, that's all we have on the record. Mr. Smith, you're going to hear from our architect shortly. We'll show you the structures, and then our planner on the variance proofs that Mr. Smith laid out for you, but as far as layout and design, relatively straightforward and simple, two-lot subdivision with two new structures proposed where one dilapidated structure sits on an oversized property. We make Mr. Smith available if any questions you folks might have.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Smith on this testimony?
I don't know. Maybe else wants to go first. All right. Mr. Smith, I noticed the property has a fence along the right of way right now, probably because of that retaining wall, right? That is not going to be replaced, correct? We know fences.
Use the microphone.
We're not proposing the installation of any walls or fences in the right of way.
Okay. Next question has to do with the two driveways, and you're seeking relief from our requirement to have five-feet separation between driveways, correct?
Correct.
I mean, how wide are the driveways proposed? 12 feet?
Well, okay. The driveways proper are more than five foot from the property line. The parking spaces that are in the driveway, if we want to call it, or the parking area, if we want to try to play semantics, is a foot off of it. The driveway coming off of Navajo is proposed to be 12-foot wide. The parking along the side of the proposed dwelling is 10-foot wide.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'll just be...I'll be frank, I'm not crazy about having the 10-foot parking spaces next to the building that are shown. Why not just make the driveways 18 feet wide and so that people can park, so you can actually probably fit four cars if you had to? Because I think you're about...the driveway's about 40 feet off of the road, right?
25. The back at...off of the right of way or off of the pavement?
Off of the pavement, the actual road.
Yeah. Well, let me say, the house, the proposed dwelling itself, the garage portion is actually 28 feet back from the right of way. But from the pavement, it's back...
Another 10.
Approximately 37, 38 feet.
Okay. I mean, I live in this neighborhood. I live 500 feet away from this property, and I don't...I can't think of a single house that has a driveway beside their house in this area. But I can think of plenty of people that have basically what I would consider a four-car driveway with where you pull into the driveway. Why not just do that? You should probably be able to fit in...you may have to widen an extra foot on one side, but you can have the five-foot offset and have two 18-foot driveways right next to each other and still have one of them aligned with the garage, couldn't you?
Let me say, I don't have an issue with it if that's something that the board would prefer to say.
The applicant can do that and is willing to.
Okay.
Does that change anything about your relief, Steve? That you...I mean, I know it's engineering on the fly now, but does that change anything about relief otherwise that we need to seek new relief for tonight, just so we can get on the record?
Well, if what we're talking about is widening the driveway coming off of Navajo now, and we would be able to hold the five foot off of the property line to comply with that, but now we end up with a significantly wider curb cut for each of the homes. It works. I have no issue doing it if that's the board's preference.
Does that affect the impervious coverage?
But actually, it's probably going to be less.
Less. I like that better.
That was the question I was getting to, is what's it changing on the metrics?
Okay.
And then the applicant is more than willing to make that accommodation and plan change?
Do I do? Members of the board have questions on this testimony at this time? Mr. Canziano, do you have any?
Just on building height, and I understand your testimony, no issue with it about trying to get the drainage away from going to the rear of the property. The property slopes away from the road now. The applicant...you are not asking for any relief on building height, is that correct?
That is correct.
So the building that's being proposed will meet the criteria for building height?
Yes, I went through and did the building height calculations. I don't like to get caught with, oops, it doesn't work.
Yes. Thank you. That's it.
Any other members' questions? Just one more. Mr. DiPiero.
To make the property slope towards the road, do you need fill?
Yes.
How much?
That we were...it's approximately 500 cubic yards that we were previously in before the board and were approved to import 500 cubic yards to the site. It actually could be a little bit less. It's not more than what was previously approved.
Okay.
Good question. I thought about that one also.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? If you could come forth and identify yourself, please?
I'm loud, so I don't think I need the microphone.
Yeah, you do, for our record, our tape.
I'm sorry?
For our tape, you need it. It's being recorded.
Good evening. My name is Margarita Nidamay. My husband and I, the family, we live in Lake Iowa, 2000. And my property, our property is Block 525, Lot 4, right behind these houses and more houses.
Yes.
Our concern about the two buildings behind and raising the property that has already been going, because I saw trucks throwing dirt on it, is the runoff water. As it is, my house is full of water coming from behind. When we move later, a couple of years, we have to do a French drain, trying to keep up with all the water that is coming from that property to us. So with more construction, less dirt to absorb of that water, we want to know if we're going to have to put a boat instead of a house, because I don't know how fast these can, you know, get, we can build a house.
Absolutely understand, and if you'll stay here, then I can show you what we're doing, okay? Right now, everything from Navajo to the rear or to the east runs onto your property.
Absolutely.
Okay. What we're proposing to help remedy that is two different things. The first thing is now, what we're proposing is from the front of the house of the proposed home, all of that is going to be regraded, so now instead of running towards your property, it runs out to Navajo. The next thing is that for the proposed dwellings, we're putting in dry wells to pick up the runoff from the roofs. So you should actually have less water that comes to your property after we get done than you have going on to it now.
That means that you're going to have a system where the water is going out of the street? That's why you're saying?
Correct. Well, there are two...that all of the...when it lands on the ground now, as I said, everything runs to you from the existing driveway, the house, all the sidewalks, all of that goes to you.
Is it properly...I need you to use the microphone.
Right. So what we are doing is we are raising that, so now it's going to slope out to the road so that all of the driveways pitch out to the road instead of back to your house. The runoff from the homes are going into these dry wells or seepage pits in the ground so that that also now isn't running to your house. Right now, everything from the roof on the existing house goes to your property. That isn't going to happen when we're done. That goes into the dry wells. So you should have less.
So it should be less?
Correct. That is correct. That is correct.
So all of the leaders from the roof are going to lead to the dry wells in the front?
That is correct.
So front and back of the roof?
Yes.
And the backyard too? Do you want to have backyard there or do you want to have the...
No, the dry wells are not proposed in the back. Dry wells are proposed in the front. That any of the rear yard is going to con...tongue died, is going to continue to slope to your property as it does now, but again, significantly less is going in that direction after than it is now.
And the backyard level is going to be the same that it is now?
No, the backyard... No, no. The backyard from the property line up to the wall of the home, which is about 41 feet, that's staying right where it is. That isn't changing. So what we're really proposing is the fill is proposed from the front of the house to the road, and we're then trying to hold the existing grades from about the middle of the home going back. So that ground doesn't change. The front is being changed so the water goes out to the street. But we're not raising the ground in the backyard. You're going to be looking at the same level after we're done that you are now.
So you say that it's not going to be more water coming out of the backyard?
That is correct. There's going to be...there's going to be less.
Less water coming out?
Less water.
Everybody use the microphone, please. Everybody.
You can take that out. You can pull it out.
But I'm asking it like, so the means it's not going to be more water coming to the backyard?
Again, there's not going... There will not be more water running onto your property. There will be less water when we are done than there is now.
Are you proposing landscaping the rear yard so that it doesn't add any extra speed to the water flowing onto our property?
It does not. We're not regrading the rear portion of the property. That's staying the same.
So it's still sloped towards her property?
It still slopes to the property, correct.
Could you potentially look at putting a berm in?
If you now put a berm around the back, now you're going to trap the water, really. It is going to significantly improve the condition with what's running there now, but to be perfectly clear, if you're having a problem now, I can't tell you that your problem is going to go away. I can tell you it's going to be better.
The only way, you're thinking about not to make it worse.
It's not going to make it worse.
That's all our concern.
Yeah.
I say with less dirt, less trees, less everything to suck, to help to suck the water, I mean, the only way you'd be existing that all that construction building that they have now, they can take all that water somewhere, right? Not to the backyard of the houses and then to my backyard, plus my house. That's what we are...that's what we're concerned about.
Okay.
Give it to the architects and the experts to make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that has any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. All right. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Steve. Our second witness, our project architect, Mr. Chairman and members, Keith Chambers. Keith has been before this board a number of times, but we'll square him and qualify him momentarily when he gets up here. Oh, he's here. He's not around.
You didn't see him.
Oh, I did. Mr. Chambers, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address for the record. Please spell your last.
Yes. Keith Chambers, C-H-A-M-B-E-R-S, and it's P.O. Box 1058, Levington, New Jersey, 08822.
And Keith, I profit that you're a licensed architect. You testified in this town before and around the state of New Jersey. Can you confirm for the record that you are in fact a professional licensed architect? You've testified in New Jersey, your license remains current, in a good standing in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am. My license is up to date. Licensed in New Jersey for 23 years and Pennsylvania as well. I've testified before many board adjustments and planning boards, and I've been before this board before.
Any questions by the board on the witness? No?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Keith, the sheets you're going to be showing the board this evening, these are all these sheets that are identical to the ones that are on file already, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So if you wouldn't mind, Keith, I know you want to walk the board through the floor plan loop briefly, and then we'll go to the elevations.
Yes. Basically, we have two smaller-scale homes rather than having a large lot and putting a large house on it with the subdivision. We have smaller-scale homes. They're roughly 32 feet wide, and the base is 33... They're roughly 32 feet wide and the base is 33.3 long. And as it goes up, we have a two-foot cantilever out in the back to give us some more square footage. So we have four bedrooms up at the second floor and one car garage, family room, kitchen, guest bedroom, bathroom downstairs. And then we also have a walkout basement behind. With the smaller scale homes, it fits in with the neighborhood better than a large structure that some of the houses that you see going up today would, you know, dwarf some of these bungalows that are currently there. These are more to scale with, you know, the smaller homes that are out on the street now. We have two-story structure and broken up with roof lines and fitted in with some stone veneer siding and both the back with the walkout so that what they were discussing about water, we would be concerned as well with not having any water in our basement. So I don't think we're going to have any problems with what we have there now. And the second house is exactly the same, just in reverse. So it's the same, same layout, just a little bit different facade, maybe some brick veneers, some siding to match the houses that are in that area, the scale and house materials. Nothing overly modern or anything like that that fits in with the scale of what's there.
Keith, you've designed a number of projects for this applicant, is that right?
Yes, I have.
Always well-appointed, good construction, nice design?
Yes, and good quality materials. And he cares about what he's putting up and that it looks nice and lasts. It's not shoddy construction.
In a word, Keith, as an architect, you've got an eye for aesthetics. In a word, how would you describe the existing structure that's on the property today?
Needs, needs some help.
And in lieu of developing a large oversized house on this lot as of right, you thought the more appropriate measure was right-sized lots for the area as you described them. So the structures you're proposing are not out of character with the composition of the neighborhood, I would imagine. Is that right?
That's correct. And a lot of the ones up and down the street have, they're bi-levels. So they have like eight steps up to the front door and then you go in and you go down or up. These are, you know, we have more in relation with the street line where you're coming in at, you know, a couple of steps up and, you know, it brings the scale down on the structure.
And just to confirm what Steve Smith previously testified to, the top height of the proposed structure is conforms to the zone standards, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Keith. Mr. Chairman.
What is the height from the street side to the peak, which I believe is what our ordinance is looking for, not the mean slope roof mean height?
To the ridge, you calculated the, the height of the ridge on your sheet?
I took it from the average, I said it from the average ridge around that.
Right, to the ridge line. Yes. Let's see what Steve has on here. Sorry, I.
It should be on here.
From the peak. You see, our ordinance requires that we know from the peak, not from the mean.
No, it's from the midpoint.
It's from, it's from the mean, the mean. On a sloped roof, it's from the mean.
For a flat roof, it would be the highest point.
Right.
Okay.
But the applicant is going to comply with the code. There's no relief, whether it's C-high relief or D-high relief.
Right. And we have 30.5 feet.
35 feet from the peak?
No, 30.5 is what he's got.
Right. That's the sloped roof mean height.
Right. Sloped roof mean height.
What I'm actually trying to get at is a streetscape.
Well, this, this shown here is the streetscape.
I understand that.
And here's what I did. I calculated from the street height to the mean height, I have 29.89. So there is a little difference because he's using the mean grade elevation where I used, you know, the street elevation to give you what it is. So it's even less at the front of the street.
The plans I say show 30 and a half. Do you think that says 29?
I believe the two houses are different.
The two houses are different.
Okay. Sorry.
Here, sorry. Here's the other one.
That's the one I was looking at.
Yeah. Sorry.
Could you give a little testimony, the curb height is, is actually, what, higher than the average perimeter grade?
That's correct. It's up, you know, it's, you're coming down, you know, currently.
Other members of the board have questions on this witness, on this testimony? Mr. Kenji?
I have a question going back to the question about getting all the roof runoff to the front of the property and to the dry wells. I just ask as a condition of approval that you provide proper detailing of downspouts and leaders.
Leaders, clean outs and everything going to the front.
Because the perimeter grades along the side of the house drain toward the rear. So we want to make sure that the roof drains and the leaders and the downspouts all get. So there's no question out in the field on the building this, it all gets to the dry well.
The dry well out front.
Out from the property.
Yes. Understood.
Mr. Math.
Just one question. You said there's an overhang design with these houses, correct? Like a two-foot overhang, you said?
I didn't say, but there is.
No, on the floor plan, right.
Oh, the cantilever out in the back.
The cantilever, that's, yes. Is the building coverage calculated including that or based on the foundation?
It's based on the foundation, right, where it meets, where it meets the ground.
Because I thought our code requires that if you have an overhang, you have to include that as building coverage.
Include the cantilever as a building coverage.
Only, it's only if it's over two feet.
Oh, it's over two feet?
Right. We're not over two feet.
Oh, so you gave the system. Thank you.
Yeah. We kept it under.
All right. Any other members of the board have any questions on this testimony at this time? Any members of the public have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Our final witness, Mr. Chairman members, our project planner, John McDonough. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Name and.
He's picking me up?
Should be. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone. John McDonough, AMC Capital, B-O-N-O-U-G-H. Business address, 1112 Greville Drive, Porset, New Jersey, and I'm the project planner.
Briefly, John, for the record, your credentials and qualifications. I know you're, you're here every few weeks, but just for the record for this case, please.
Yes, I am a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. That license is current and in good standing. I have the good fortune of getting to do this throughout the entire state from the north to the southeast and west. I do it on a nightly basis and I've been here many, many times. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. That's our national certification, which is also current and in good standing. I testify in courts and before courts.
Any questions on the experience or qualifications? No? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Start over to you, John.
Pretty straightforward application here before the board. I know we've seen a lot of them. We see them a lot in the planning world as well. We call it a textbook Kaufman case or a C2 case where we look at a better zoning alternative. And interestingly, the Kaufman case, which is the benchmark C2 case, that defined the newer standard in our land use law. Knowing that if we go outside of New Jersey or up until 1984, the C2 standard did not exist and it does not exist outside of New Jersey, an applicant would have to show hardship. The C2 test looks at whether an application represents a better zoning alternative for the property. We look at the benefits of the application as a whole and we weigh them against the potential impacts or the potential detriments. Here, as the Kaufman case tells us, we have an opportunity for improved neighborhood harmony. Those were the exact words that came out of the Kaufman case. Again, it was a case that involved splitting one oversized lot into two, I'll say, normal-sized lot that were consistent with the character of the neighborhood. We know that lot size is the defining element that defines building size. And where we have certain masses established here, this is an opportunity to replicate that or complement that with lot sizes that are similar to the surrounding neighborhood. Your planner has given the board a good basis or a good list of the relief that the applicant is seeking here from the R4 zone district. None of the, I'll say, heavier deviations obviously are needed here in terms of the use, the density, the height, the floor area, the light, the proper lean from the planning board to create two undersized lots in the context of your R4 district where you presently have a substantially oversized lot. So the relief is for the lot area where 6,000 is the minimum required and each lot is going to be 5,000 square feet. We're also looking at a lot width of 50 feet where the minimum required would be 60 feet. Again, that goes for both lots. Likewise, for the lot frontage as well. So the main belief that the applicant is seeking is dimensional relief. And interestingly, we took a look at the street. If you look at Navajo Avenue between Mini Ha Ha and Hayawatha Boulevard, there are 18 lots that presently face the street and over 40% of them actually have a lot width that is less than 50 feet or less, which is what the applicant is proposing here, or a lot area of 5,000 square feet or less. So again, substantial variation in the nature of the area. Interestingly, I don't see a single lot on Navajo that is a 100-footer except for the subject. So the subject lot is unusual to the extent that number one, it has a significant land mass and a very small building on it that in its current context is not much larger than what would be a typical shed in today's environment. Certainly not conducive to an appropriate or modern living environment in the context of what we see, new construction here in the, in the community. So again, the anomaly is the existing condition, a supersized lot with much smaller sized lots in the neighborhood, which could result in a building that is completely out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood. Back in the 80s and 90s, we saw the introduction of floor area ratio controls that would prevent McMansions or monster houses which would overpower a neighborhood. That could be the case here given the substantially oversized condition of the lot. And that's where we look at the Kaufman case, which found substantially, substantial reasoning where two smaller lots, two smaller buildings were a better alternative than one overpowering house here. And again, certainly an opportunity for improved neighborhood harmony. In terms of the positive criteria and the purposes of zoning that are advanced here, we look at the advancement of purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare because the project is going to deliver new housing stock that is appropriately scaled for the neighborhood and meets today's contemporary standards for new housing to replenish the older housing stock here. Clearly, the house that's on the property now has outlived its useful life and doesn't serve a practical purpose. This is an opportunity for improved zoning. Likewise, we look at the advancement of purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, not only in terms of the aesthetic of the building itself, but the overall mass and scale of the building as well being complementary to what's envisioned under the R4 zoning standards and what's established on the street. Additionally, we see the advancement of purpose M, which is the planning goal for efficient use of land because this is going to take an oversized piece of property that is presently being underutilized, putting it back into productive use, again, in a mass and scale that's inappropriate for the neighborhood. So that would go, could purpose M, our planning goal for efficient use of land. Finally, the advancement of purpose G, the planning goal to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations according to the needs of all the Jersey citizens. This is on par with new housing stock in the community, new construction in the community, a much better alternative than a supersized house on this supersized lot. So again, those are all the project positives. We counterbalance them with the impacts or the potential impacts associated with two lots that are undersized in terms of the literal requirement of your ordinance. I think you have a good predicate of testimony before me from an engineering standpoint that these buildings are not going to be appeared as overcrowding. The setbacks in terms of the buildings are going to comply with your ordinance. Coverage is going to comply with your ordinance. And really, we have two buildings that in terms of the edge of those buildings are exactly what could be realized under a conforming plan as well. So not violating the light here, the open space in the site, or the privacy we use, the enjoyment of the neighboring properties as well. You also have good solid testimony from an architectural standpoint that these buildings are going to be designed to be comfortable, going to be safe, and in accordance with all applicable building codes. So you've got, again, a good predicate for the planning conclusion that the relief to be granted without any substantially adverse impacts to the public. Likewise, this is not going to substantially undermine the purpose of your R4 zone district. As we look at the way this neighborhood has been platted, when this is ultimately platted out with these two lots, it's going to look more consistent with the neighborhood than the current condition. With that said, we think the C2 test is met here under the exact same rationale as the Kaufman case. There's some subsidiary relief as well related to the driveway offset. I'll fall back on the engineering testimony that that's designed to function safely and efficiently and certainly not impede the use for the functionality of the adjacent properties. And I think I'm also seeing relief related to a front wall or a front fence related to six feet being proposed where four feet would be the maximum required. Again, that's to work the site into the grade and we think a better zoning alternative than a steeper driveway at this location. It's a step down, cutting into the street. So we don't think the sign is going, the wall, rather, is going to overpower the neighborhood in that regard as well. All said, this is a really good application. We think the relief is relatively modest in the context of what the applicant is seeking here to complement the neighborhood and again, provides and meets the statutory requirement as a better zoning alternative to the property. Okay. I'll pull it on direct and open up any redirect, look for clues.
Thank you, John. Chairman?
Any questions?
The only comment I have is regarding the driveway. I believe we've eliminated that variance with the suggestion of doing the double.
I don't think Mr. McDonough had been in the room yet when we did that, so that's nice for you.
No testimony required on that one.
Thanks.
Let him earn his keep.
Any members of the board have any questions on this testimony? Mr. Math.
Mr. McDonough, you said that 40% of the lots are, have substandard lot widths on Navajo. You're only measuring from Mini Ha Ha to Hayawatha Boulevard?
We did. We did. There are four across the street, immediately across the street in a row that are 40 and 50 footers. The applicant's proposing a 50 footer here. So if you live here, if you're looking out at 40 and 50 foot wide lots, the proposal is for 50 foot wide lots.
Okay. So how much does that math change if we grant this, if we grant variance relief for this lot? Does that make it 50%? I don't know. I think, thought you said there were 18 homes.
Yes. My numbers are showing eight out of 18 homes that face Navajo, which is 44%. So I can do that math without being an engineer. Nine divided by 18 is 50%.
Wouldn't you have 19 then?
Well, there'd be 19, there'd be an extra home.
That's true. So it's just under.
Okay. What's the width of the lots adjacent to this?
So the subject is Lot 21. If you're standing on the street and looking at the subject, to your left, Lot 22 is a 40 footer.
Okay.
To your right, Lot number 20 is a 60 footer.
Okay.
But beyond that, two lots to the right, Lot number 19, is a 40 footer. And then Lot 18 has a angled frontage, but 22 foot segment and a 20 foot segment. So let's say 42 feet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. DiPiero.
Well, Mr. McDonough might remember, I don't really like taking a conforming lot and subdividing it into two non-conforming lots. That's not been my, my favorite thing to do. We established the zone being 60 foot wide so that we don't continue to increase the density in already in density areas, high-density areas. That was the purpose of having 60 foot. We keep making exceptions and keep producing and increasing density. I also don't like the McMansion aspect if we turn it down and they build one big house. That doesn't conform to the. That doesn't conform to the neighborhood. So I'm gonna go along with this one because I think McMansions is a bigger evil than two non-conforming lots.
Other questions, my members of the board? Mr. Stanzial, do you? Okay, just couldn't tell if you were raising your arm and...
He's scratching his nose.
Mr. Canziano, do you have any?
No.
All right. Are there any members of the public who have questions on this witness on the planning Hearing and seeing none. Sir?
Thank you, John. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you folks for your time again tonight. This is relatively simple and straightforward. Significantly oversized lot with dilapidated structure that can have a resurgence of life with two lots with structures that are in keeping with the style and size of the area, two lots that are in keeping with what's around us, notwithstanding the fact that there's a 10-foot frontage deficiency. And overall, we think the proofs are there, Mr. Chairman and members. So we put it before you folks to deliberate at this time.
All right, this closes, well, not quite. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of this application? Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Is there a member of this board who would like to move the application for a resolution? And subject to what conditions?
The conditions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've got a couple of conditions that our counselor will walk us through and then look for a motion.
First condition is that the applicant will comply with the engineering comments in the engineers' report, number two through six. And the other is that the applicant will provide calculation data for the seepage pits and leaders in detail to ensure that the water runoff from the front of the property and the roof leaders themselves will be flowing towards Navajo, and that will be done at the satisfaction of the board engineer.
All right. Now, Nora, I believe that our numbers tonight make it so that every member up here is eligible for all motions and all voting.
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more condition.
Oh, okay.
Counselor, you have to submit revised plans showing the driveway reconfiguration.
Right, which is going to have an 18-foot width.
Correct.
As well, just for the record, yes. Our survey will submit those as well as the calculations.
Yep.
All right. Now, somebody willing to move?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. De Deech.
Motion to approve application number 23, colon, 527 Alpha Investments LLC, 52 Navajo Avenue, Block 525, Lot 21, minor subdivision with variance for a two-lot subdivision.
Do I have a second?
With the conditions as mentioned.
Second, Mealy.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
De Deech?
Yes.
Piero?
Yes.
McGrath?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Math?
I'm gonna vote yes because with the variance relief, on the basis that the 50-foot lot width is not out of keeping with this neighborhood.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
Yep. Appreciate it. Is there a desire to have a brief break or should we just move right into the next?
Move right into the next.
All right. All right.
Why should we give Mr. Kelly a break?
I brought a Gatorade.
All right, so then we're moving on to the next case, which is listed as a continuation of application number 23, colon, 511 Serparsippany LLC, 299 Jefferson Road, Block 736, Lot 7.3, carried from February 5th.
Chairman, members, nice to see everybody again. Larry Calley on behalf of the applicant. So we intend to conclude this evening, Mr. Chairman and members. I'll tell you shortly who you're gonna hear from. It's a slight doc deck of our witnesses this evening. At the last meeting a few weeks ago, you heard from our acoustic engineer who gave the board, we hope, some assurances as to conformity with the sound levels to the lot line, status of the implementation of the sound wall that we also presented to the board at the last meeting with our continued civil engineering testimony. And then we had also a recall of our project traffic engineer to confirm that as modified, everything about his report remains accurate and current and up to date. We conferred two witnesses for this evening. Mr. Chairman and members, our project architect. The floor plan is not much to see. It's a warehouse. You know, there's warehouse space, there's gonna be some offices. We'll walk you through that. That should be relatively quick. We want to show you folks the elevations and the rendering we've got so you can see the skin, the articulation, the fenestration of this building. It's pretty impressive looking for a warehouse, so we think the board should see that. You're gonna wanna know what you're gonna see, street-side and from the abutting properties. And then from there, Mr. Chairman, members, we're gonna go into our final witness, our project planner, Michael Tobia, will testify as to the bulk variance proofs that we have. You know, recall, and you folks all know this as members of the planning board, there's no use relief here. The warehouse is a permitted use in this zone. Everything about the use meets the parameters of the code, land use standards and general ordinance standards, no relief from that at all. The relief is limited on the bulk side of it. And if you recall also, following previous iterations and resubmissions of plans, the relief has tightened up significantly. The largest item we had of relief was our encroachment into the sensitive area buffer, to the residential buffer at the rear. That is fully conforming on the prior plans that the board has seen. So there is no more relief to the rear. The structure is right-sized, there is no impermeable coverage deviations, building coverage setbacks, with the exception of the front yard setback to Jefferson Road because that's where we started activating the warehouse when we tried to slide it away from the residential areas. There's other ancillary relief that we talked about at the last meeting, the wall height now, which is a new addition, the slope disturbance, man-made slopes, as our project engineer testified two number of times. But the relief is relatively slight for this conforming use on this property that does need an adaptive reuse from the office that it still is vacant and once was as thriving. The warehouse is the more appropriate use and the code seems to be aligned with that. So you hear from our project planner last on that, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions, perhaps even from some of our neighbors. We'll go through all of them, but our goal and our hope is to perhaps conclude this evening, Mr. Chairman. I will note one more thing. There has been another fire department review. It was an email transfer of, Nora might have it. Our understanding is that the fire official has no issues with the plan as previously proposed. The bells and whistles that Bowler has since added on to that responded to the board's recommendations, which is how do you identify the fire lane getting back there? How do you identify the geo grid areas? How are you gonna demarcate it? Bowler has added all of that, you know, just sort of gratuitously to sort of be a good citizen on behalf of the applicant. With that, Mr. Chairman, our first two witnesses we'd like to get to now. Love your approval.
We don't have any new waivers.
No. No waivers.
Didn't think so, well.
And we're gonna mark a few exhibits tonight in council so you know. I think we're starting on A6 tonight, once we get there. You're going to see three renderings, I think, and you might see something else, but we'll mark them sequentially. We'll identify them once we get to them. Okay. Claudio, what's coming up? We'll swear you and we'll qualify you.
Raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God. Name and address of the record, please, by your last.
Claudio Breda, D R E D A, the business address is 110 Edison Place.
I apologize. I need you to speak into the mic and your name again.
Oh, sorry. Claudio Breda, last name is D R E D A.
Thank you.
Okay, Claudio, for the benefit of the board, your background and credentials in the field of architecture and your licensing as well, please.
Sure, so I've been in the field of architecture for over 21 years now. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey as well as several other states here in the East Coast, and I've appeared before multiple planning boards from Bergen County all the way up to Monmouth County.
And your license is currently in good standing?
It is, yes. Thank you.
Any questions on this qualifications? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. So Claudio, if you wouldn't mind, you heard my introduction to the board as to what we hope to do here this evening. If you wouldn't mind walking the board around the floor plan loop, I know it's gonna be relatively slight and brief, given how we're developing the interior of the structure, and then we'll go to the elevations from there.
Counselor, is this a new exhibit?
No.
This is a filed, this is a filed copy with no changes, yes.
So just to walk through the weight of land, if you will. As previously noted on the previous testimony, the overall footprint is 106,400 square feet. Overall building length is 440 feet with a depth of 280 feet. Typical warehouse, you typically come spacing for the various racking requirements. This is being designed for, in the ideal world, for one tenant, but it is, it could accommodate up to two tenants, hence why we have two offices on each corner. The two offices here also act as the main entries to employees into the warehouse. On the plan south, we have a total of 16 dock doors, two of which will be used for trash compactors, and we have two drive-in doors for vans and small box trucks. And on the plan east, we have our utilities coming in from Jefferson Road, hence why we have here the electrical room and the fire pump room on the side. And then obviously, we have all the typical doors throughout the perimeter development for life safety requirements in egress. And the perimeter walls are being constructed out of precast concrete panels. So as I noted, the walls are precast concrete. We have developed two tones, lighter gray and a darker gray, with some reveals throughout just to break up the scale of the overall building. We have an overall height to, from finished floor to the highest parapet, which is 42 feet, six inches. That's the highest parapet. And we have some dark anodized aluminum storefronts flanking the two corner offices with a canopy just designating the main entry points. As I noted before, here on the north elevation, you have all your dock doors with the two drive-in ramps for the small box trucks. Here you can see the signage facing Jefferson Road, which is complying with all the zoning ordinance. And we have shown here also the lighting, which should be mounted on the building, just giving some general lighting around the building, which is mounted up between 18 feet and 21 feet.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Stand on the other side of the drawing so the rest of us can see the drawing. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. But that's pretty much the elevations.
Claudio, before we go to the other sheet, that elevation as colored was the same as on file with the board as well, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, just to confirm. Now I think we're about to mark something.
So this is the last exhibit I have.
So if you can identify this by name and date, we'll ultimately mark it today's date as exhibit A6, I believe we're up to. If you can identify for the record, Claudio.
Sure, so we're calling this as a design rendering, and it's dated December 7th of 2023.
Counsel, we call it the colorized entrance elevation?
Yes.
Is that fair enough?
Perfect. So again, this is the last exhibit I have, is just a 3D photorealistic rendering showing the view from Jefferson Road looking into the building. You can see here the corner of the building, which is one of the office components. You can see the other one in the far background, which again, is the main entries to visitors and employees into the building. As I noted, precast concrete with two tones of gray, various reveals on the concrete, and just a canopy designating the main entries into the building. And as I noted here, the signage facing the road.
Would you please speak up?
That's it.
Just speak a little louder.
Oh.
That's all you have for the moment, I believe, right, Claudio?
Say that again?
That's all you have for the moment.
That is all I have, yes.
Make Mr. Brett available to any questions you folks might have, Mr. Chairman, members.
Members of the board have any questions on this witness, on this testimony at this time? All right.
Anybody else?
Okay. Nobody else, Gordon.
Is there any reason why this building has to be 106,000 square feet? Could it be less?
In theory, yes, anything could be less, but this is really market-driven, you know. Truth be told, this is actually the smallest warehouse I ever testified in front of a planning board in New Jersey. All the warehouses that come out of our offices, to be honest, are much larger than this.
Okay, I mean, I do appreciate that you've moved the location of the building to the bare minimum you can do without variance relief for the back. But you're looking for a 40% variance relief for the front yard on a road that does not have, from what I can tell, any buildings closer than 100 feet from the right-of-way. I know you're not part of the witness to talk about that, but you are the witness to talk about the size of the building and the design. So I guess my big question is, would this building still be viable with three less loading spaces and 8,800 less square feet of space?
Probably not. From a financial perspective, probably not.
Okay, so interestingly enough, finances are one of the few items we're not allowed to consider on this board. All right. But there's no technical reason why it can't be smaller, is there?
From a technical perspective, technically not.
Okay, thank you.
Members, other members of the board have any questions on this testimony at this time?
I have a question on the signage.
Yes.
So you proposed two signs presumably for two different?
Tenants, yes, exactly.
With having the two signs on either side of the building, my concern is that one side is for cars and the other is for trucks, and that there could be some confusion in accessing the site. Would it be possible to put both signage on, I guess, the car side of the building?
No. That's not. The wall-mounted signs, the applicant would like to leave it as it's currently proposed. And the idea after the civil testimony and the way finding is that the street-side signs, the monument signs are gonna help you get into where you need to go and eventually become sort of just a matter of course. The trucks know where they're going, the cars know, the employees certainly know where they're going. So it's a very quick educational process, we think, in addition to the signage, but the wall-mounted signage, the plan is for the tenancy to have one on either side.
How do you identify which unit goes to which tenant?
How would you do it?
I don't think we could identify that at this point. I mean, this is a speculative building.
But depending, let's assume, we're assuming a few things, but let's assume we've got two tenants, based on the layout of your floor plan, how you enter the building, is there any logic as to how and where you would locate which sign versus the other?
Right, or is there the numbering of the units? How's that gonna be shown? Just, you know, it's my first day on the job, going in for an interview. How do I get there?
Yeah, it's a valid point. I think the signage probably have to come up with the clever 299A versus 299B, for example, just to designate each tenant, if it is in fact two tenants.
Okay.
For internal identification purposes, you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Other members of the board have any questions on this witness at this, on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none. I'm gonna say this for the public that is here, that is interested. Right now, I'm going to ask if there are any questions on this witness, on this testimony at this time. After that is done, we will then, when the counselor has a chance to sum his case, because I'm assuming this is your last witness.
Our planner will be up.
Oh, your planner, I'm sorry. We'll have the planner come up. He will testify, then you'll have a chance to question the planner. After the planner is done, anybody who has any statements they wish to make in either favor or opposition to this application at this time will be granted sufficient time to make those statements. So that'll be tonight. So are there any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? If you please come up and identify yourself. This is strictly on the architecture of the building. Very good.
Thank you. My name is Ramish Nair. I'm at 43 Ryan Drive in the residential community. So I have a question. Currently, the loading base, the 17 loading base are facing, you know, to one side, which is the ADP building that's there. which is the ADP building that's there. So is there any, you know, from architecturally or design-wise, to turn that around so the base facing Jefferson Road rather than to the side? Is there anything that you lose in terms of, you know, the space or something? What is the, you know, is it possible to turn it around and facing that loading base to Jefferson? So I'm hoping.
So I can help out here, because Mr. Brett did not design that. Our civil engineer did. And at the last meeting, we came back, and our civil engineer, Ben Crowder of Bowler Engineering, testified at length that they've undertaken reviews as to the rotation, what we call that the rotation plan, as opposed to sliding the structure forward. And the rotation plan was not deemed as feasible from various standpoints, from a design standpoint, from a marketability standpoint, and shortly you'll hear from a planning standpoint. So it was considered, it was not pursued. This was pursued as the better alternative, which was structure loading on that side towards ADP and structure slid towards Jefferson Road to get it out of the activated buffer area in the rear. But Mr. Brett, I don't think you really testified much as to that, because this was civil engineering, not architecture.
Yeah, so we'll then come back later with our objection on it, so that's it. Thank you.
Any other members of the public who have questions on the architect, on this presentation at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. Thank you, Claudia. So now we're going to call our project planner, Mr. Chairman members. Mr. Michael Tobia.
You swear affirm a testimony you're about to give, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please. Please spell your Latin.
Tobia, T-O-B-I-A. I'm the applicant's planning consultant, and I'm at 92 Overwood Road in Morristown.
Michael, for the benefit of the board and the record, your background and credentials in the field of professional planning?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. License is in good standing. I hold a bachelor's degree and a master's degree exclusively in this field, or in planning. Finished my grad work in 1981. I've been practicing continuously in the field since then. That makes about 43 years, if I count this as a, with appearances now before over 200 zoning boards and planning boards throughout the state, including many appearances in Morris County and multiple appearances here in Parsippany.
Any questions on the qualifications? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Michael, a few background and baseline confirmation before we cut you loose here. You're familiar with the property surrounding area and the zone, is that right?
Yes.
You're familiar with the code, the master plan?
I am.
And you're familiar with every iteration of the applicant's proposal from inception of filing through the current iteration, which now includes the slit plan, the reduced relief, the acoustic wall, and the like. Is that right?
Yes.
And you're certainly familiar with the relief that's being requested now into the current plan.
Correct, yes.
So, Michael, if you would, please, for the benefit of your analysis and conclusions as to the relief and the appropriateness of what the applicant is seeking here for this permitted use.
So we'll start with some basics here. As you heard, this is a 106,400 square foot warehouse that's being proposed. It is in the SCV5 zone. Zoning metrics that are met by this application include height, the use of the land, impervious coverage, building coverage, side yard setback, rear yard setback, minimum floor area, as well as now the buffer off the back of the property. You'll recall when we started back here in September, on September 18th, three to 75-foot buffer in the back. Now it's 150 feet. And now it's 150 feet with a sound wall as well that we'll talk about in a minute. But it's a largely compliant site plan, okay? Most notably, the use is permitted. The height actually gets a foot and a half down lower than what building, than the building you now see on the property. The variances we're now seeking are pretty limited, and I want to emphasize the two major variances. Mainly, front yard setback that Mr. Meth talked about and our height of buffer wall are driven entirely by our dialogue back on September 18th, when we realized the highest priority of this job for the board and the public was an adequate buffer in the back. We thought we had that at 75 feet. After many planned iterations and discussions with this board, we went to a fully compliant 150-foot buffer. We did that through doing two things. Pursuing to board suggestions, we simply slid this whole building module up closer to the street. It didn't change more or less the height of the building, didn't change the size of the footprint. There were only minor changes to the overall building and layout. But the big takeaway was we got to 150 feet. Once we did that, and recognizing that acoustical impacts were a major concern of the board, we added a sound wall. You heard from Mr. Norm Doughty at the last hearing that that sound wall is 238 feet in length, or 258, I'm sorry, 16 feet high. And his testimony established that with that wall up and his multitude of studies, it would result in compliant acoustical impact even at night with this building operating as we expect it would as a warehouse. These two variances, front yard setback, 60 feet versus 100 feet proposed, and a 16-foot wall with 6 feet proposed, are driven entirely by our attempts to be a better neighbor for Masda Brook. The benefits of each clearly outweigh the detriments. Now, Mr. Meth, I've been up and down the street 20 times since I started the case. You're correct, most buildings out there reach 100-foot front yard setbacks, or even more in some instances. But the 60-foot setback suggested here on our site plan still works. Bear in mind, Jefferson Road has a 60-foot right-of-way. The nearest building across the street is the Liquid Church, which has roughly a 100-foot setback. Our building-to-building setback here, then if you do the numbers quickly, is something like 220 feet, okay, of front wall to front wall of the proposed building. I think it's adequate. The landscaping sensibility along Jefferson will not change. We have a big front lawn in front of the building. Some existing trees will remain. More plant material will be added. We deem the 60-foot buffer, the 60-foot front yard more than adequate, given that we're achieving 150 feet in the back. Note, please, that our neighboring land uses, the man-office building to the south, ADP to the north, only have 60-foot buffers off the back. This is how these buildings were built years ago and their parking lots. They're only 60 feet off the back up against other sections of Masda Brook. We're now at 150 feet. Moreover, our sound wall gets 211 feet away from the rear property line. Not 150, but 211. Moreover, the loading behind the sound wall, the nearest loading spot, is approximately 238 feet from the rear property line. We're getting close to a football field in length between the noise generator on the site, mainly loading, and the rear property line. I want you to balance the front yard setback also with our landscaping plan. You heard a lot about that at two meetings now. 61 plans are proposed in the back of the property. Most of those are evergreen, fewer deciduous. We have 20 white pines. We have 16 red cedars. We have four pin oaks, seven sourgums. Our deciduous plant material, we know, will reach 50 feet in height or more. And I'm going to show you some buffering renderings in a second. We also have 14 hollies across that rear property line. Importantly, for our neighbors in Masda Brook, every single plant that now exists along the rear property line will remain. So our limit of disturbance for all construction is in front of the existing tree line. That means everything remains. And right now, if you go out in the field in the summertime, there's an amazingly effective buffer between us and Masda Brook. Problem is, it's all deciduous. So our leaves fall after about a seven-month window. And right now, if you went back there, you'd see a lot of bare trees. This applicant, with its landscaping plan, has gone, as I said, to a mostly evergreen supplement to what's out there now, together with a four-foot berm across the sound wall portion of the property, and they've killed it, okay? They're going to make a buffer that is so dense that we estimate five years out, you won't be able to see the sound wall, nor will you be able to see our building from the townhouse side. So you heard Mr. McDonough earlier. The test is really easy here. In our planning partnership, we're saying what we're doing here presents a better zoning alternative than a lesser buffer or a larger front yard setback. I want to go to two exhibits, which we do need to mark. These are dated February 24th. They were collaborative efforts by everyone on the team. And what we're going to do is try and illustrate what you would see from two perspectives. That's so much better than...
I mean, the whole meaning.
We're going to try and demonstrate what you're going to see from two perspectives five years out. And where are we?
We'll start with A7.
So we'll go A7, A8. Both are dated, I'm sorry.
222.
222, okay. February 22nd. First one's up. We'll turn this around once I explain it to the board so the audience can see it. This is what we did to illustrate the view from the northeast corner of the site, looking toward the building and toward the sound wall. In this area, you have approximately eight eastern red cedars, six American holly, a couple of deciduous trees, and a new pin oak. In the background of the photo, if you look closely, you'll see the deciduous trees now with no leaves on them. This is a photo simulation. It's not a rendering. Okay, so I went out, shot a photo, because we knew where all the existing trees were, and then we added the evergreen plant material in front of it. We estimate these evergreens, like the ones probably in your own yards, grow at one to two feet per year. We wanted to illustrate five years out what it would look like, assuming no real growth of any of the existing plant material. When you look at A7, moving left to right, you'll see a tiny glimpse of the sound wall at 16 feet. Incidentally, the sound wall's been color-coordinated with the building, so it matches. And it's kind of an earth tone, soft color. It won't jump out when you look at it. And you'll see a great deal of evergreen plant material. At this point, we're probably estimating 15 to 20 feet in height, just five years out. These things can grow up to, from 30 to 50 feet high at maturity. The proposed building shown off to the left is equally well-buffered, okay? Buffers are never supposed to achieve total blockage of everything, just a mere softening and an effective physical barrier between residential uses and non-residential uses. The conclusion here on A7 is a very effective buffer has been provided thanks to the 150-foot buffer, suggested by board members to move this building closer to the street. I point out also, on the right side of A7, if you look closely, you'll see some contouring here that also created a berm about four feet high above the parking lot to get the trees even higher. That's just a little grading exercise we can do to further block the sound wall. So you have a 16-foot sound wall, folks, which is, it sounds high. But with our acoustical studies and operating it physically, creates a really, really good barrier for noise impacts heading back toward Masda Brook. I'm going to turn this around, and I'll leave it here for you all to look at. And then A8 is, again, a photo simulation. If you look at the top of A8, you'll see all the deciduous trees that I photographed, I want to say, January 17th. So we have no leaves on the trees. And yet, come springtime, you'll see it's almost impossible to see the townhouses from the site and vice versa. This shot is taken more or less dead center on where the new building will be located. So we're only shooting at about a third of the common property line with Masda Brook, okay? We've illustrated, in this case, in the foreground here, all the evergreen plant material is new. We have about eight eastern cedars in the center of the illustration. Moving off to the right, you have an additional eight. There's a new pin oak, deciduous tree to be added to the site that's slightly left of center. And you have a series of white pines behind this buffer that will also provide additional buffer. White pines, as you know, and the cedars are extremely aggressive growers, okay? We're showing these things again at 15, 20 feet high, maybe a little more. They rarely rot once they get going, and white pines can easily exceed 50 feet. The conclusion on A8 also is that the buffering will get dramatically better, especially in wintertime, than what's out on the site now. In the foreground here, by the way, you see our proposed fire lane. More on that in a moment. That's why we gave you that different color. The fire lane, technically, Mr. Meth, is a physical structure. And I know last month you said, well, it's in the buffer. Should it be a variance? Well, you don't think so. The physical improvement is all subterranean. It's planted, so you're going to see grass, not our pavers. And we would submit to you, this is, A, it's a physical and emergency safety issue that the fire department wanted, and B, it's completely innocuous from a visual standpoint, okay? So that's A7 and A8. The conclusion is the buffering will be as good as any buffering I can imagine, given that we're 150 feet in depth, okay? So a couple smaller variances we need to talk about? Oh, you know what I'm going to do first, if you don't mind, is... February 15th, we did some homework with our fire department after our last meeting. We're way ahead of the game here. This is normally something that would be imposed as a condition of approval. But we've had more contact with the fire department, and we went around this site pursuant to their input, and we did a few things.
This is the new sheet, yes, Michael?
So mark this.
It was not filed, no. We advanced a copy, but that's it, so we're up to...
What comes after A8?
I'm not good at math. A9, let's try.
A9 is revised site plan layout sheet 301. Like I said, dated February 15th. And what we did here... This was just checking boxes with the fire department. Knock boxes were installed front and back on the building. They asked for additional striping around the fire connection on the south side of the building. Red light for the connection has been added to the plan. A sign down on the bottom that says "No Entry Fire Access Only" has been added where the fire road begins. The fire department ultimately said we don't need a second turnaround in the back, which we did at our last meeting here, okay? And after talking it over further with them, it was deemed that we only needed the one-way at the back northeast corner of the site, okay? And what this did, because they asked for a little bit extra striping, was reduce our parking count to 98 stalls from 99 at the last hearing. With the EV credit, we're now at 102 stalls proposed. You've heard testimony from our civil engineer and our traffic witness that really we need 70 to 78 or so to be adequate, and we're well over that number, we're at 102, okay? These changes... These changes were minor. I believe in your file now should be a sign-off email style from the fire department. So, I want to talk about signs for a minute, if that's okay. We heard a little dialogue before about wall signs. What we did, Claudia, can you put up your red light, please? What we did here, recognizing that we might have two tenants that we have for offices front and back, and do we show a sign on there? Did we show one of the signs? Okay. We looked at your ordinance. The ordinance permits one wall sign. The ordinance permits 150 feet with that one wall sign. All we did was divvy it up and go 75 for one sign, 75 for the other. We put one at each end of the building. They'll be separated by roughly 220 feet. And we just decided to use the permitted sign area more economically than one big sign. If there are two tenants, great. It does help more with identification of the driveways, meaning we'll have one on each side near the two driveways. And if we get two tenants, everyone wants to brand their building. Everyone wants to brand their building, right? At least our big tenant. So we think this is fair and reasonable. It's not over signage. It's not sign pollution. And what we suspect this winter is probably, you're going to have directional signs on the individual office units, even little window signs. Facts, we don't know. There might be more wayfinding signs on the site at four square feet each that will provide additional direction. And we feel, given that we're not going up with 150-foot threshold, this cannot be reasonably argued to be over signage. Note also, and that's A6 I'm talking to right now. We, on the plan, as you may recall, we are reusing two freestanding signs out at the street that were approved by variance in 2012. We're not changing the size of those. We're slightly relocating one. The same rationale to the variance in 2012 is evident here. We have two driveways, we want two signs. They're compliant in size, and they will provide benefits of wayfinding for our driveway for passenger cars, as well as our trucks coming in the other side. Previously approved, we want to continue it. I just wanted to mention that so the record is clear on the freestanders. Mr. Crowder, our civil engineer, explained his dimensioning of our loading dock spaces. That was a variance he explained as to size. Your ordinance requires drastically oversized loading spaces. I don't know the basis for it going back to its adoption, but what we have here with size of loading space plus size of drive aisle was deemed consistent with standard engineering practice for this type of facility. If you wanted to make the required loading space 147 feet long as required by ordinance, it would extend from the building all the way over nearly to the side property line. Makes no sense. That's what we call hardship and a practical difficulty. It would require us to remove our 17 storage spaces on the other side of the site, which are really vital for queuing and stacking and staging. So we think what Mr. Crowder expressed here with size of stalls and proper dimensioning is adequate for the site plan. Larry? Did we miss anything?
Steve's looks, but...
Height of wall sign. Your ordinance requires 25 feet. The wall sign, Claudia showed you on exhibit A6, upper left. The two of them get up approximately to 33 to 36.75 feet. I don't want to do too much architectural testimony here, but our wall signs almost always go up to the upper band of the building. You rarely see these signs move down to the middle panel or a low panel. It just doesn't look like it. Beyond that, you maximize visibility when you're a fire. I want you to look at that sign. I think we'd all conclude it's not over signage. It's not up on the roof, which we definitely don't like, and we think it's a practical, appropriate spot for that sign. There's no detriment to it whatsoever. Those are our variances. I do want to say, for the purposes of the record and based on what I said, they advance goals A, C, G, I, and M of the Masda Brook Landry law. Your master plan adopted two months before COVID started, as I recall, recognized that the office market was weakening. It said it's appropriate to find other suitable non-residential alternatives in the area to still maintain viability and usefulness of properties. That was in January 2000, 2002, two months before COVID goes bonkers on us. All that's happened with the office market since then is even more bad news. What this applicant is doing, what this proposed use, is recognizing market trends, but near impossible ability to rent older office space the way we once did, and adding a brand-new, useful, permitted use to the land. To wrap up, nothing here I deem to be a substantial detriment to the public good. I think we've really, really been good neighbors to Masda Brook in the back with all the buffering and soundproofing we've done. I told you we meet nearly every zoning standard in the SED5 zone. Building coverage importantly is two-plus percentage points below what's allowed. Lot coverage is eight percentage points below what's allowed, and it's even gone down a little bit with our latest plan. We've told you traffic would be a minimal impact on the area and vastly lower than what the office building generated when it was in full operation. We've talked to you about acoustical impact. We've covered signs, and I think the conclusion has to be this is an approvable application. Well thought out now for many, many months with a lot of sensitivity to our number-one pressure point, which are the homes to the rear of us. I have to stop talking because I'm losing my voice.
Christine, do you have any questions on the planner?
Not at this moment.
Not at this meeting?
You might want to come back to me.
All right. Are the members of the board who have questions of the planner on his testimony at this meeting? Mr. Kenji Anno, you have?
I had a question on the planner's testimony sheet A9 or exhibit A9 that you brought up. I just want to understand, and then the landscaping you discussed, the grass paver system that's below the ground, will have grass growing through it, all intensive purposes, you won't be able to see it. What is the plan to identify that location so that the fire department knows where to drive and where not to drive?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. It is on our plan. We call this A9, okay? And, I'm sorry, cut that. We show on A9 12 so-called delineators flanking the fire road in the back, four and a half, and there's a detailed sheet that shows what that is on sheet C901. This was requested at the last meeting. Additionally, on the plan, there's a note that says if fire department does not like our selection of delineator, we'll go to whatever color and brand they want. Okay? In fact, there are a couple notes here that say particular specs will be subject to fire department preference. I'm sorry, I forgot that.
And I, this is, I was going to save it to the end, but this one is, again, comment on the site plan. If I recall, the site plan did not have the detail or specific information of the specific sound wall that was testified to by Mr. Dottie. So that, just as a follow-up, same idea, that the plan must have that specific sound wall that was, that's designed for this site.
We, you're correct. We'd accept the condition that that be reviewed. We know what color's going to be now, and we even know the model type now right here, and we'd accept that as a condition of approval so you all can review it.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Math?
Mr. Toby. So the front yard setback is 40% of, it's a 40% variance, correct? Is there any planning reason why the building could not be smaller and eliminate the front yard setback variance?
I'll give you the same answer Claudia gave you. You know, it could be smaller, but quite frankly, we did exactly what this board said back in September. There were a lot of ideas kicked around, and one of them was, why don't we slide the building up? The remarks at that time were, "We're not concerned about Jefferson Road." And it wasn't a careless remark. It was a remark that we all said, "We're more concerned about the back of the property." All you got to do is you're weighing here, okay? The benefit of this is half a football field of separation in the back.
I don't speak football, I speak hockey, so...
Football is, football field, goal line, the goal line is 300 feet. We can go and play catch sometime if you want, I'll show you how to do it, okay? 300 feet. Half of that's 150. It's a lot of elbow work. And it could be reduced in front, but we have a specific pro forma here. We've got a guerrilla project in terms of demolition. And we're knocking down 150,000 feet of space to build 100,000 feet of space.
106,400.
106, sorry, 106,000.
If it was 100,000, I might be okay.
And then, you know, I want to share with you, front yard setbacks and their routine across a given street are really important in single-family neighborhoods, right? Where we like to see our homes pretty orderly across the whole front of a street. We like to see lawn depth roughly the same. This is what gives a single-family neighborhood character. Go to a place like where I live, like Morristown, you also want to see your business buildings pretty regimentally lined up, right? It helps shoppers get from one building to another very quickly. It matters much less in an area like this, meaning an industrial area. These buildings are several hundred feet apart. This lot is 500 feet wide. The continuity building to building here matters much less than the other illustrations I gave to you. So we think it works. I'm being straight with you, if we drop this back, there's no planning reason, but there's a real practical reason, there's a pro forma reason, and in the balancing of the front yard setback is the fact that we killed the buffer in the back. 150 to 211 feet with a tremendous amount of additional fabrications.
Other members of the board have questions on this testimony at this time? Nobody else?
All right.
Now you have your...
Now I'm ready. I'm going to go back to the signs, and I have no problem with the size or the height. I still have that question of safety, and as Mr. Kelly said, you'll make that mistake once and you won't make it again. It's that once that could be a problem. That being said, the freestanding signs don't, and as far as I remember, there's no wayfinding as this is a truck entrance. We'd just like to see that added somewhere that it's designated as a truck entrance.
Yeah, we would totally agree with that. Maybe we put it on the main sign, the main copy, you know? On the main free standards.
On the main free standards, I think that would be a good compromise. And the only other variance that you didn't really address was the driveway width, I believe, for the truck.
So, I wanted to talk to you about that. If you look at the ordinance, what, I forgot, is it 20, I can't remember, 24 feet?
Yes.
And we're at 30 feet. But what the ordinance says is the driveway width excluding turning radium in the right-of-way can only be 24 feet. If you look at this plan, we have no driveway within the right-of-way other than the turning radium. My position is the ordinance provision doesn't apply. What this provision is supposed to do, folks, is make sure your driveways don't get too wide. When they get too wide, people start like exiting behind the car in front of them and two people trying to make left turns at the same time, and it gets too messy. But here, all you have at that right-of-way is turning radium, meaning wide lefts and wide rights to permit truck movements. If you disagreed with me, all I would tell you is we did add extra driveway width here within our property because we're moving trucks on that side of the site. Trucks are big, they need more room to negotiate. If you look at our driveway on the opposite side of the site, that's the 24 feet compliance.
We're doing a little research at the moment, so...
On that section, is it, I'm trying, on the...
Yeah.
I wrote it down here someplace.
And I agree, some of the language there regarding the, I do remember the radium, and I guess that's just a matter of...
Yeah, I think if it's the right section, it's 43275H, 43275H. Size of driveway, driveway shell, a driveway exclusive of curb radium, curvy turn radium, to your point, shall not be less than 12 feet or more than 24 feet wide. So it's, doesn't include the, yeah, it doesn't reference right-of-way. It's just the driver, I read it as the driver width beyond your curb return.
Right, and read on. I mean, it says in the right-of-way, right?
No.
Exclusive of turning radium in the right-of-way.
Well, the copy I have doesn't say right-of-way.
So listen, we're not going to argue with you on this. The practical proof is we have big vehicles coming in that side, and we want more width for them to negotiate the turn.
Okay.
Okay?
Fair enough. Any other members of the board have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Are there members of the public who have questions on this witness, of this witness at this time? Hearing and seeing none.
Oh, one more thing. What we did, Mr. Chairman...
Conditionist.
Yeah, we were taking notes for the last three meetings. We wanted to stipulate to following to make your attorney's job easier. Going back to meetings, we said no outdoor storage on the site, no hazmats on the property. If you recall, we're stipulating to that. A maximum of two tenants, we mentioned at our first hearing. There was a question about the sound wall and how we would get, I believe, over a drainage pipe, and we would design it subject to your engineer's review to make sure we have that right. The building will not be used for cold storage. Consequently, there will be no refrigerated trucks on the site outdoors, stored outdoors. There's a noise concern about those trucks. The other thing that came up at the last hearing, which was a good suggestion from the audience, is we'll do everything we can along the back of the property to install evergreens before we start construction, which means we'll give that plant material a head start on its growth, but we'll also provide buffering early on in the construction process. That will be seasonally dependent on the planting seasons. At a minimum, we'll put... At a minimum, we'll put construction fencing out there as well as maybe a construction screen to help soften the view looking into the property. And finally, we'll comply with hourly limits of construction and dust control measures during demolition consistent with township ordinances. Let me give you that list if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's a question.
I, I understand that, I'm just, I'm just waiting for the attorney to tell me where he is.
Well, at this point, Mr. Chairman, we know there's gotta be public comment, and at that point, we'll probably reserve and maybe ask for a few minutes of break to speak to my team before we allow them to deliberate, but at this point, our, our witness deck has concluded on this case. You've heard from civil, traffic, acoustic, architecture, and planning now, so our, our witness testimony, our case in chief, will be concluded shortly. We want to hear what our public comment portion might yield, and then we're gonna go from there, Mr. Chairman.
So let me tell the public what's gonna happen now. I'm gonna ask for questions on this testimony at this time, but then we're gonna go to public comment after that. They'll, they're two separate things, all right?
Yeah.
So if, if, if people have a comment to make, now is not the time, but in a few moments, it will be the time. So I'm gonna ask first if there is a, if anybody has any questions on the testimony of this, of this witness at this time. If you could come forward and identify yourself into the microphone and give your address, please.
Hi, Rakesh Shah, One O Two Jillian Boulevard, so in the Masda Brook community. Question, there was a discussion of a berm towards the back of the property that will line up with Masda Brook. If that berm is raised four feet, I know we've got decent amount of water, just 'cause I live in the, kind of the far side of it. I'm just wondering what we're doing to control that, that that water doesn't flow into our neighborhood?
I follow that, I thought, and that, I'm not the engineer in the job, I thought there was a discussion that it would be controlled in the back by others.
Can you use the microphone, please?
Sorry. I thought there was a discussion with our civil engineer about that being handled with inlets and other consorting in the back. Not my thing, but I fully understand.
Regardless, the law requires that there be no new runoff.
Thanks.
Any other questions of this witness at this time? Please come forward and identify yourself and...
Hi, everyone, Venkateshukla, Seventy Two Jillian, been twenty years resident in the community. One question, you're gonna exit, you said you had two tenants.
Yes.
So, do you have, like, I come from a warehousing project back in my career, so when you share the facility with two tenants, did you have cross-dock feature? You're gonna have a cross-docking, like, for example, in airlines, right? Airlines can share with Delta. So if you're gonna allow that, did you plan for that?
So, we planned for offices in the front and in the back. At some point, there's gonna be a partition through the building to separate the one unit from the other.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that's, that's what we asked.
Yeah, basically, if you have three, two entrances, you're gonna have like one entrance for one tenant, and it's like two units in a, in a rental apartment, right? One entrance to...
That has an export to you, right?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so there's not gonna be a broken, like, a tenant in between sharing, right? Inside the warehouse structure. Got it, got it. And then another question I have from the Masda Brook, you know, for this exhibit, is that I saw the, the, the buffer, right? So did you plan for any, we have lots of wildlife in the area, so that picture what I see is that, do you plan to build any, like, maybe nests for the geese, or?
Yeah, we, I don't think it's...
Okay.
It's nest pad.
Okay, okay, because we foresee that, because to come, it's since I'm silly, but definitely we have a proper wildlife, and eighty percent, like, I would say twenty percent of our Masda Brook dwellers have pets. So I would see the pets can use this area.
So, remember, between you and us is a fence, it's on your property.
Okay.
It's a high fence.
Sure.
Everything we're doing here will have no instructions to wildlife movement, in fact, it's gonna be habitat for certain species. You're not gonna be able to come on this property and walk around unless you're gonna wear something out with some tenants in the future.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other members who have questions on this witness, of this witness, on this testimony at this time?
Hi, I'm Dharmesh Pariwala, One Six Nine, Emily Place. My home is right, so I can see the ADT building right now, right? So I saw a lot of comments about sound pollution, but none about light pollution, like if there is going to be huge floodlights or something that's gonna be there, and I suppose this is going to be twenty-four seven, so that also is a concern that from my perspective.
So, there's no guarantee it's gonna be twenty-four seven, okay? We don't know the tenants yet, okay? Beyond that, our lighting on the, the parking lot is so far away from your rear property line that we're gonna be at zero point zero foot candles, meaning minimal impact in the back. I want you to remember something else. The building that's up there now, last I counted, has fifty-four windows facing your property. Fifty-four, okay? Three stories, you know, and this building has some minimal number, maybe a half dozen facing the back. So lighting impact from the building compared to what you had before, cleaning crews in at night, lights are all on, will be greatly reduced from that, that level.
What about like a floodlight pacing? So that pacing should be, should be...
We don't have any floodlights on the back of the building. We're lighting the lots, part of the lots, but they're now being used with downfiring lights that are designed not to flare out onto other properties. Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome. Questions on this testimony at this time? Yes, please, come up, identify yourself and your address.
Hi, my name is Prithiv Desai, and I'm living in Two Twenty Eight, Emily Place. So my question is, there is a, maybe there is a possibility it's twenty-four seven operation. So the trucks come at night, so usually sometimes they take a rest, so, and I have seen on the highways and everywhere that they are like idle and running. So is it possible that there might be two, three trucks running at night and like idle and they are resting? Because they need to run to keep the temperature properly when they are resting inside, because they are, there will be twenty-four seven, so there will be truck at night also.
So, I understand. We had a traffic witness who said our truck traffic at night would be extremely light, extremely light. And then what we're saying now is we're not gonna have refrigerated trucks because the building won't be called storage. I'm, I would imagine also there's a state law about idling, right? That would apply here, meaning you can't let your truck run idle all night long, it's gotta be shut off, okay? So that's where we're at, and we did study sound on this very carefully. That's why the wall went up to protect you all in the back.
I understand that you put the wall on that, but is there any precaution that you will put any sign that there is no idle truck running at night or something, because people are sleeping right behind that, right? Because, because you, there should be some signs that they don't leave the truck running and resting, because it's already nighttime, so they might be tired too.
So, so as the witness indicated, ma'am, that there is, there are state and there are federal laws against idling for certain durations concussively, right? Repeatedly, non-stop. We could put a sign out there as needed saying, no idling in comport with NJSA, whatever the state statute might be or the regulation might be, we have no problem doing that for the drivers. We don't suspect this is gonna be an issue, but to allay your concerns, we're glad to put a sign out there to educate any drivers in the loading area.
Yeah.
You can't idle in violation of state laws. That wouldn't be a local regulation, it would be a state, it wouldn't be a policy, it would be advising them what the state laws and what they can and cannot.
Yeah, I would really appreciate that, because it can possible that two or three trucks might be idle and running at night, it is possible, so I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have one last question. Is it about that exit?
So, talking about the front lawn, that's a main road, right? It leads to the warehouse. So typically in New Jersey, when you have a double yellow dotted line, right? That is for both oncoming and going. But for, for a vehicle as big as a truck, there has to be a buffer, buffer lane. So have that been planned, or it is not the responsibility of this? It's your responsibility or it's responsibility of the township?
What, are you saying?
On the Jefferson Road.
Any changes in Jefferson, right?
Yes, we need a buffer lane. Means wherever, where a, where a truck or can, when by turning waits for the both sides to wait. And I'm, I see that where a town as small as Pasadena, there is no buffer lane. Unless it is like a big road, as far as six and a half ton, it's only there in few sections, it's not there everywhere. And I would have seen in Biden Road, wreath accidents because of that.
This is...
I'm just talking about the Jefferson Road.
I think, I don't, we're, we're not planning any change to Jefferson Road. I think the gentleman might be talking about a left turn lane into the site, I'm not sure, but we're not proposing any changes to the street, and there are trucks on the street all the time making the same movements we'd be making.
All right. If you have a question on the planning testimony at this time, we're gonna have time for opposition later, but if you have a question on the planning testimony, please come forward.
Yes, yeah, use the mic, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sachin Brandy. I live in the Masda Brook community. I know you said you don't know who are the users, right now, but how many trucks do you anticipate in a day and per hour?
I, I don't think, I don't think Mr. Tobia can really answer that question. This was part of traffic engineering testimony. There was a traffic impact analysis that was filed, and our prior witness who was here twice testifying, John Harder of Atlantic Traffic, that was his wheelhouse, his bailiwick. Mr. Tobia candidly didn't speak to that tonight, so it's not a proper cross-examination question, but, but even more than that, he really is not the person to ask that question to.
Okay, but as you are attorney, you need to know, right?
I'm not a witness, so I can't, I can't tell you either.
All right.
We have the last meeting.
I was not present, I was just asking, curious to know how many trucks will be coming in every day or during that eight hours period. All right, thank you.
Any other questions on the planning testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. All right. I'm assuming everybody wants to get going with the opposition discussions before we make a break so that they can have a chance to talk, if we get that far. So what I'm gonna call for right now is, is there an attorney who has been? No? Hired to discuss?
Yes, Pete?
Yes, I'm counsel for Masda Brook.
All right, I'd like to start with you. All right? So that we can then perhaps speed the process.
Sure.
All right, so you're an attorney representing the Masda Brook Homeowners Association. If you could come forward, identify yourself, and begin the process. If you can give him a seat and a microphone.
I can stand, that's fine. Good evening. Sure.
He's gonna talk longer if he sits, Michael.
We're gonna take that first.
Good evening, board members. I appeared here a few weeks ago, but for the record, my name is David Dockery, last name is spelled D-O-C-K-E-R-Y, and I'm from the law firm of Becker, Sixty Seven East Park Place, Suite Eight Hundred, Morristown, New Jersey. Our firm is legal counsel for the Masda Brook Homeowners Association. And just to be clear for the record, I am only counsel to the corporate entity, the association, I am not representing any individual owners who may be here tonight, they are free to make comments outside of my purview. But in general, you know, my client has asked me to, to make a few comments with regards to the application. My client fully understands that the ordinance does permit the warehouse use of this site, and so far as that goes, we are, we are not objecting to the application per se. But I think that there was conversations going back to September and comments from the board and also from my client about as to whether pushing the building forward is the best solution for the site. You know, there's a very big difference between having a nine-to-five office building that violates the buffer, abutting the proper, property line, versus a warehouse that has the potential for twenty-seven, twenty-four seven traffic. You know, my clients have to live behind this project, they have to sleep behind this project. And to that point, to Mr. Math's comments, there was only testimony provided that the only reason why, first of all, the warehouse is a hundred and six thousand four hundred square feet is due to economic reasons. There was not testimony given as to why the building could not comply fully with the bulk standards. So one of the asks, first of all, of my client, is while we appreciate all of the effort that's gone into sound attenuation, buffering, and, and whatnot, is there's still gonna be a warehouse with, you know, approximately sixteen loading bays of trucks coming and going. And being within two hundred approximate, you know, plus square feet of that sounds like a lot, but when you really think about the practical implications of living next to a warehouse, I don't think, you know, my client, their position is that that is not a desirable use, particularly with the trucks fronting and loading on the side. What was also lacking from the testimony is why this project could not be turned around. Obviously, the applicant filed the application as they did, and they weren't required to provide this testimony, but there were suggestions from this planning board in September that that alternative be considered, so that the trucks would be entering and loading straight along Jefferson and using the building itself as a natural buffer. There was testimony provided that in doing so, that the side parking for employees would then be moved to the back, which would then violate that, that buffering requirement. So as crazy as it sounds, my client is okay with that very thing of a variance to the back with employee parking, just as it basically is on the site conditions today. They believe that that would indeed provide for better sound attenuation, light pollution, overall pollution of diesel trucks coming and going, and that would be their, their preference. Alternatively, they would ask for some sort of conditions of operation, which I know many were agreed to, which I think my client is very pleased to hear, but, but one of those is the twenty-four seven operation. And I know there's been testimony that says that it's not guaranteed that there's gonna be twenty-four seven, but it's also not guaranteed that there isn't going to be twenty-four seven, you know, operation. I understand that Mr. Dottie did, did provide testimony as to the sound decibel levels that are in compliance with the ordinance, but at the same time, again, while the applicant wasn't required, there wasn't testimony as to whether the sound attenuation wouldn't be better suited for trucks along Jefferson, sort of, again, rotating the building versus the current building. So at this time, my client is requesting that their opposition testimony be carried. They do have an expert that would like to testify to certain elements of, of this design, and so we would like to reserve that right tonight. And I think the expert testimony that they're prepared to, to provide... And I think the expert testimony that they're prepared to provide would be, you know, obviously suited for, you know, whether the sport wants to carry further opposition testimony for a few weeks from, from this evening.
You wish to respond?
I, I do. So, you know, Mr. Dockery has been engaged for some time now, his discussions and mine go back, I think, well over a month, when he was having difficulty, I think, obtaining documents expediently. I forwarded him site plans and reports and everything immediately. Their expert should have been here tonight. It doesn't take too long to engage an expert, especially one in opposition of a case, it's easier to poke holes than it is to design. At this point, I see this as nothing more than a typical objector delay tactic. So I think the expert should have been here, ready to be called, and offer their limited testimony and contravention of our testimony, and I, I think that was here and now, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion. So, you know, I, I can't, in good faith, say that this should be carried to another meeting for that testimony. I'd like to hear an explanation as to who that expert is, specifically what their field is, expert by name, what their field is, what their availability is, and why weren't they called here tonight, and were they already engaged to even provide testimony? I think those are all relevant inquiries to see whether or not the rubber's met the road with this so-called objecting expert.
Well, we'll see what the board's pleasure is with regard to that, at that point. That is what you wish to start your presentation? Should we go to members of the community who wish to speak, and, or do you wish to continue?
I mean, from a very practical matter, it is surprisingly difficult to obtain experts who aren't already doing warehouse projects. To no surprise, these are hot, to, to Mr. Calley's comment, but I do think it would be appropriate at this time if other members of the public would like to speak, and if the board wants to revisit my adjournment request at the conclusion of that, that I would be happy to, to yield to the public.
Well, I'm going to take a moment and find out what my board thinks. I personally, because of all these warehouse projects, would actually like to hear a witness speaking who is not on the warehouse side. So I'm going to ask my board if they have any comments on this, and if they would either object or be in favor of a continuance, and frankly, at this point, it's late enough that we'd only have a little time for comments from the, the public. Mr. Di Piero.
Yeah, I was going to make a statement later, but this seems appropriate. I'm the one that originally recommended that the building be rotated ninety degrees counterclockwise. By the sound engineer, Mr. Dotty's diagram, his own diagram, showed that the sound on the opposite side to the truck terminals was dark green, which meant there was no sound in the back of the building if the building had been rotated ninety degrees counterclockwise. No sound at all. You wouldn't need the fence. In the twenty-six years that I've been on the planning board, my number-one priority has always been to protect the quality of life of the residents, and that, that's still today. My concern is the quality of life of the residents. Now, I know this sound wall is supposed to protect them to some degree, but even on Mr. Dotty's diagram, the sound behind the constructed barrier, sound barrier, was not dark green, it was stages of light green and yellow. Whether it's acceptable levels, okay, I'll accept that, he's an expert, but when someone's trying to sleep not too far away, nighttime noise when you're trying to sleep is a lot different than daytime. And I'm still concerned about the quality of life of those residents. However, if we were to reject this application because the building wasn't rotated the way I suggested, if the application was turned down, round four of affordable housing is coming in a short time. I would much rather see this warehouse in that location and not apartments with affordable housing, which were popping up like mushrooms thanks to the court system. So I'll, I'll go along with this and hope that your sound wall works as well as you claim it will, but I still believe rotating that building ninety degrees counterclockwise was the better solution. Now, do we need someone else to come here and tell us that? I don't think so. I'm, I'm not in favor of delaying if we, if the members are willing to make a decision tonight, I would go along with that.
Okay. Any other comments by members of the board on this?
I can't think.
We, we more or less go to ten o'clock at night, right?
I find it hard to believe that we're going to be able to get through all of the neighbor testimony between then. I mean, I would say, you know, if we make it to ten, and, you know, it's ten o'clock and we can vote, then vote, otherwise, we have to carry it anyway.
Fair enough. Mr. Mealy?
The gentleman has the right to provide testimony to this board, that's why we're here. We should not just cut it short and deny him the right to testify. Thank you.
All right, well, I, I like the idea of getting the neighbors a chance to make their comments, and if that gets us past ten o'clock, then we're going to be continuing anyway. So, wait, wait, I gotta, I gotta make sure the attorney is, is stepping aside and letting the neighbors talk now.
Yes, yes.
All right.
This is public commentary now? Yes, public commentary, yeah.
And that means that you have to identify yourself, and you may be asked questions, which usually requires that we swear you in.
Correct, so.
Sure.
I'm going to swear you in, I'm going to ask you for your name, I'm going to ask you to speak slowly, because I am taking down your testimony.
Okay.
I'm just going to ask you to, to speak slowly, and please spell your name for me, okay? And, and your address.
Okay.
Do you swear affirm, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Name, Bankat Ramana Chivukula, address seventy-two Jillian Boulevard.
Okay, you're going to have to spell that for me, please.
Seventy-two J-I-L-L-I-A-N.
Slow, slowly, sir.
J-I-L-L.
Okay, I'm trying the handwriting here, so please, slowly. First name?
Last name, C-H-I-V-U-K-U-L-A.
Okay, and your address?
Address seventy-two Jillian, J-I-L-L-I-A-N Boulevard.
Okay, sir, you can go ahead.
So, the, one of the biggest concern that I have is whenever you talk of warehouse over residential community, my experience based on what I have heard or learned in the world, is that it, it is for the business. It, it is, it is a part of the chain, but fiscal or, you know, economical chain, but definitely a concern I have is it encourages crime. It encourages crime at the extent that, you know, there is no control. Definitely we need to have more law enforcement, you know, all other things have to be prepped up before a warehouse can be approved. That is the first concern I have, and I think that's the last concern, that it, imagine, like, there are so many drug overdose deaths in New Jersey. It's all, Rockaway is filled with legal marijuana, which is approved here, and a warehouse is just one extra factor that we are allowing into our township for, for our coming generation to, you know, to, to take on the effects of what we decide today. That's all, nothing else I have to say. Thank you. That's it.
Any counselor you wish to?
Hello?
No, sir. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please spell your first name and your last name.
Sure. My first name is Sachin, S-A-C-H-I-N, last name is Brahmi, B-R-A-H-M-I. My address is sixty-six Emily Place, Persipeni, it's in the Majorable Town Hall. So I would like to say that I would like to oppose this construction, I would like to give some small facts. I'm living in our community since last fifteen years, and I'm one of the board members since that time almost. Our community is very peaceful, very loving, there are almost like hundred and fifty homes in the vicinity of this back of the warehouse. Hundred and fifty means there are almost like three hundred kids and almost five to six hundred total population. This construction of the warehouse is directly going to impact our day-to-day life. I know you're going to construct a sound wall, and this and that, but just imagine there are hundreds of kids playing, what about the pollution factor? I don't know how many trucks are coming in, but I heard from last time a one of my friends, it go to fifty, sixty trucks a day. Imagine sixty trucks means every hour there are eight trucks, and, and approximately, and then every, every five to ten minutes, there is a one truck coming. There are kids playing around, hundreds, hundred fifty kids playing in our community, there are elderly people also now moving in our community, and I, I'm, I'm pretty sure they won't be pleased or the quality of life will be affected. So considering all this, my request is to just, like, stop the construction, or oppose the construction. All right, thank you.
Any questions?
My name is.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Ramesh, R-A-M-E-S-H, first name, last name, Naier, N-A-I-R. Forty-three Ryan Drive, R-H-Y-A-N, Ryan Drive.
I'm sorry, say that again.
R-H-Y-A-N, Ryan, Ryan Drive.
What was the number again?
Forty-three.
Thank you, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, so, again, I, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that one of the major concern is the nighttime operations, and I know that we had sound engineers came in and a number of board members expressed their concerns to forty, forty-five decibels, even in the night, and most often in, in our residence, all the bedrooms are upstairs, that's where people are leaving. So daytime operations, general office operation, not a big deal, but in the night, this is a major concern for all of us. And, and potentially all the computer simulation on the ti, you know, the, the sounds, it's great, but it doesn't really count concurrency, you have three trucks coming in, four trucks coming in, there is no limit on how many trucks that can come in. So that is a totally different thing, that how much decibel it can generate when, when multiple trucks operation coming in, rather than a buscase scenario, computer simulation. So the night operations is really going to affect the quality of the life, and, you know, there's a lot of kids studying there, elderly people, this is going to be a major concern for all of us. So that is, that is one thing that I would like to, you know, and I, I really object any nighttime operations that is there. And I totally agree with the many people mentioned here, if the, if the warehouse is rotated, if that is in the front, that will make life a lot easier, there's a lot of barrier there, that will help us to reduce the noise and the sound, so that is definitely something that we want to consider, otherwise, I request the board not to approve with that, without that, you know, either there is a limit on the nighttime operations, or without that, you know, changed, not to approve this application. Thank you.
Any questions?
Can I add one more thing there? So, so the other thing, we requested a sound engineer to, to come and, and represent us and coming with expert. I heard that the law attorney objected that, but we, we still need, we are not expert, we are, you know, regular people, we still need to get that time for us to, to engage that sound light expert to understand that impact, especially that concurrency, especially the real world truck and, and the noise coming in, so we request to allow that too. Thank you.
Other members of the public who have questions, not questions, but who wish to state their objections in this particular case?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick, quick question. Was that in two requests? So you, you had a request, because you're not representing them, and then he had a request also for an expert?
I think it was through the attorney.
But he said he's not representing them, and they, it sounded like he had a separate...
He said he's representing the homeowners' association, but not the individual homeowners.
Okay, so it's one request?
Yeah. If you wish to come up and speak in opposition to this case this time, please come up, identify yourself. Get sworn in.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record, please spell your first and last.
My name is Mohan, first name, M-H-O-H, he has an apple and he's a Nancy, last name is Krishnraj, K-R-I-S-H-N-A-R-A-J, and eleven thirty-seven Ryan Drive, Persipeni. The first and foremost thing is, as Mr. Di Piero said, that, that it has to be the, the docking, loading dock has to be on the front side that he proposed, but I don't know why the town or the developers don't agree to that, so that should have been a better one for the, the residents who lives in the Majorable Community. So having said that, I'd like to really, you know, beg to consider those, and accordingly to do vote, if anything to be done tonight, and please do so for any of these objections, even as a community resident, so I'd like to object that as well. And the other point is about in terms of the operations, the timings of it, it should, it should not be twenty-four by seven, so please do consider that also in terms of the, because it was all for the people, so make sure that also considered in mind, and accordingly do vote of that. Okay? Thank you, that's all I have.
Anyone else wish to speak on this, at this time?
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Priti Desai, two-two-eight Emily Place.
Please spell your name.
Priti, P-R-I-T-I, Desai, D-E-S-A-I.
Okay, I'm sorry, your address again?
Two-twenty-eight Emily Place.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to do the same request, that we live there since fifteen years, and whatever the house is, that's our property. So first of all, who would like to live, when we, we wish to sell our house, property value is definitely going to go down, because nobody's going to wish to buy this house be, be behind the, there is a warehouse. Plus, our kids are studying in schools or colleges, bedroom windows are right behind, I live right behind the building, I see clearly what is going on there, they can see what I'm doing here, so it looks on the paper that, oh, this is twenty, two hundred feet away and all that stuff, but if you visit the place, then it's totally different, because I, I really see everything going in there. So we don't want, like, and if there are two buildings and people are working at night, they would be definitely going to see in our bedroom what is going on there too. So I don't think that's a good idea, they should have a, where on the other side, like a, what, I mean, I'm totally opposed to warehouse, actually. I like the idea of having affordable housing over there, but even though there is, like, even, I really request that you consider not to have a warehouse over there, but still, I would, as a second, like, option for me, I would go for, like, okay, drive, parking in the back, so that way the building go little, I mean, trucks go in the front, so we get less pollution and less noise. So I would really request you guys to consider about our request. Thank you.
All right. Any other members of the public wish to speak, that, please don't repeat yourselves?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record?
Dharmesh Bharyavala, D-H-A-R-M-E-S-H. Dharmesh Pariyavala, D.H.A.R.M.E.S.H.
Yep.
Last name Pariyavala, P.A.R.I.A.W.A.L.A. Address is 169 Emily Place, E.M.I.L.Y.
Thank you, sir.
So I just want to mention that we are not trying to delay the process. The request to, you know, expert look at, give us their opinion is reasonable and saying that since we are not experts, we did not know exactly how this is going, right? So this is all we're figuring out and not trying to delay the process, and we should have the opportunity to have the expert give his comments. Thank you.
All right. Other members of the public? You're already under oath.
Yeah, yeah.
Just say who you are.
Just Venkat Chivukula, 72 Jillian Boulevard. What prompted me, dear friends, today to come all the way, because I never came to this kind of meeting. I had to come because morning I observed one geez run over by, I don't know which car. It was all right on the... Near the warehouse. That really ticked me off. Second one is that I went to drop off my daughter to the college, Rutgers University, and I was coming back. Somewhere around the Summerville 227 northbound, there was a warehouse truck that dropped by accident. It was not a big semi-trailer, but it was like a normal, like, trailer, and it dropped plastic plant pots. It littered out of high-speed traffic, and everything fell on the road, and there was a chaos, and there were, like, so much, like, I can imagine that. I see that coming. So it's true happening today. So around 2:00 afternoon, I'm coming back. It happened on 227. It basically snared the traffic. It created a traffic. So that's something we want, this is our town. That's the last closing comment I have. I really sincerely, you know, wish you take all these fellow residents' comments into consideration before you make the final vote. Thank you so much.
You wanted to make some comments for some time.
Hold on. Okay, sir. Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record. Please spell your name.
Bala, B.A.L.A. Last name Sundaresan, S.U.N.D.A.R.E.S.A.N.
Address?
186 Jillian Boulevard, J.I.L.L.I.A.N.
Thank you, sir.
So my idea is that this warehouse is not going to help us much. It's going to affect the quality of our life. I have a school-going kid who will definitely find it difficult during the night to sleep. And although there are barriers that they say that will come, but I don't think that's going to help us much. So I would like you to consider this, and I oppose this warehouse coming into that place. I'd like the board members to take a rightful decision. Thank you.
More members of the public? Hearing and seeing none. Do you wish to respond?
No, Mr. Chairman. My only comment and thought is that it's 10:00. I realize that it's at the point where we're not getting to a deliberation in the vote, regardless of the pleasure of the board to carry for an objectors expert witness. My only request is I would like to ask Mr. Dockery again if they've identified at the very least the expertise area of that witness, if not the witness by name at this point. I think both are appropriately put on a table if he knows them. I want to confirm that his witness, if he's going to submit any written report, it's going to meet the statutory requirements of 10 days out, so we have an opportunity to review it as well. And once that expert is known, we need to know who it is because I might need to recall one of my client's expert witnesses as well to be in the room, and it could be one of several witnesses that are not here with us tonight and may not be at a future meeting. So we need some context and more information on who this witness might be, even if not by name, their area of expertise, in addition, obviously, to confirming they're going to make any submissions with the statutory deadlines, copying the applicant, of course, and then I guess we're looking for the next date so they can prosecute their case in chief.
Well, before we do that, I'd like to ask the pleasure of the board. We have an opportunity here because it's just 10:00, as far as I'm concerned. Is the pleasure of the board that we should go to a vote at this time or that we should continue and allow the opposition to present further information?
Mr. Chairman, I've already commented on that, so I think I made myself clear. I think we should get as much testimony as we can, regardless of the time.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Mealy. I think I'd like to hear more from someone opposing this. And again, I agree with what Mr. Di Piero said, is we've seen some of this, but I'd like to understand more about the impact of it, and I think even the townspeople brought a good point, some of the standards of which they built the sound and how the wall would work, how will that work against 60 loaded-up trucks? I don't know if we dove that deep into it.
Fair enough. Any other comments from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to hear from the, from an expert, from others' perspective. So, yeah, that would be a good...
All right. Sounds like we're going to continue this. Before I ask for a vote on continuing this, Nora, what would be the date that we would be able to have that we could continue this to where the opposition would have a chance to get an expert and give proper notice?
I don't know how much time I need. My next opening is March 18th.
March 18th. I've got to ask the two attorneys if March 18th would work for them.
Applicant can be ready that night, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've got a... Yes, so now I'm going to ask my board to vote. Nora, would you call the roll on continuing this case to March 18th?
Diddy?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
McGrath?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dan Young?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman, if I could just make a notice announcement. To the members of the public here, this matter is going to be carried to March 18th, 2024, 7:30 in these chambers. You will not receive new notice. This will serve as your notice. You're not going to get another letter in the mail, okay? Counsel, your notice is preserved and carried to March 18th.
Thank you.
I do think Mr. Calley's, for purposes of expediting some of this, it makes a fair point with regard to the expert, expertise field, so we know Mr. Calley doesn't have to bring that call of his witnesses, so we can now at least counsel what kind of expert field you're looking to bring, call an expert in, so we have that ready to go.
Certainly, and that's fair. Happy to comply with Mr. Calley's request, both as far as submission of any reports 10 days prior and whatnot. So the intention is to utilize the expertise of the firm of Arch Forensic. They have a few professionals that I intend to call, one of them being a professional planner and professional engineer specifically to testify as to sound and overall planning testimony and possible light and also truck pollution topics as well. So that will be the limited scope of expert testimony known at this time.
All right. I would just ask if that is going to expand, that you contact Mr. Calley ahead of time. I don't want to be put in a situation, at least the board, having to then further delay where, say, Mr. Calley then has to redirect his witnesses, and if the board can consolidate those types of hearings, that we can do that and try to, you know, be efficient as possible.
No, I certainly understand and respect that, and we'll definitely abide by that.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you.
Just for my own information, because I've not been put in this position before, we've heard from the public, but now the attorney is going to make a case with experts. At the next meeting, would we expect to hear from the public again or just from the attorney? And make the case?
I typically let the objectors' counsel put on their case in chief first because there may be situations of cross-examination of their witnesses by both counsel and the public, as well as redirect by counsel. So I would hate to say that we may have jumped the gun on the public portion this evening, and it would be prudent to hear the public's comments one more time after all testimony has been provided because apparently we still got to have more testimony to be heard, and I think it's fair that the public be given second to last final word. Mr. Calley will have the final words, but the public will have one more opportunity after all testimony has been provided.
Okay. Just was interested in knowing how the next meeting should be run.
Yes. Yeah, we still have evidentiary portion. It's going to essentially be reopened.
Right.
For counsel to present his objection. So it makes complete real sense then to have the public have the opportunity to weigh in one more time.
Okay, so we've voted to continue this case to March 18th. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody else can talk to Nora?